Call this board meeting to order on Tuesday, September 27, 2016 at 6:40. We please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Exermita?
Here.
Mrs. Kimpfanna?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes on September 13, 2016.
So moved.
Do you have your second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Exermita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimpfanna?
Aye.
Mr. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Exermita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimpfanna?
Aye.
Mr. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to recognitions and celebrations, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, so today we'd like to have Adams City High School. We have Mr. Mike Rogers, who is going to give us some information on the visualize program, how students get college credit, high school credit. So at this time, if you would come up to the microphone, please.
How's it going? I have a PowerPoint, too. I don't know if we can show that.
Sure.
But pretty much, I just wanted to tell you guys about our program. We have a really good program, and there's a lot of new faces here tonight. So I kind of, you know, wanted to brag to you guys a little bit. So first and foremost, on Saturday for our homecoming parade, we paint the snowplows for Commerce City. So we paint murals on them, and we're going to be doing that this Thursday. We have one day to paint them, so the kids have to submit artwork for a contest, and all the faculty votes on it. And so the top 10 winners get to show their art in that contest. The Commerce City Police Department takes the students down for that. Some of the other stuff that you see is, this is our honors studio art. So the kids get college credit after two years. They submit portfolios. Last year, every student who submitted a portfolio got college credit. They scored high enough, which was really cool. The other thing that I'm trying, or I'm showing you is the CCD college class. So I got hired through Community College of Denver, and the students who take my class get college credit. We're trying to expand that program also. So we're trying to do a mural painting class eventually, and we're trying to do a Level Two drawing class as well. Since I've been here, so this is my eighth year in the district, we've hung artwork all around the halls at ACHS, and then we've also hung artwork here, too. We got in coot's with the carpentry teacher, and he frames all of our stuff for us. And so he's doing that this year. Our new guy is doing it. And then we have three art shows coming up that I wanted to invite you guys to. First and foremost is the Cultural Council Show in December. And so I'll send you guys dates as soon as those are finalized. The mayor of Commerce City normally attends that, and they give the kids a scholarship, the winners. We also have a big art show in May. It's a district art show that we're going to have Rocky Mountain College Art and Design come down, and they normally give a scholarship. And then the other, the last art show is the Congressional Art Show with Ed Pollmutter, and he gives the kids a scholarship. And then he also, the winner gets to hang their artwork in the United States Capitol in DC, and the kids get a plane ticket for them and a parent to fly out and see their artwork.
Nice.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Now, moving on to audience comments, and we will have Stephanie Lennon, Adams City High School Parade.
My name is Stephanie Levine. I'm the Student Council sponsor at Adams City High School. I just wanted to introduce a couple of our students that are on Student Council. And this is Jaleah Garza. She is going to invite you guys to some of our homecoming events. So that's why I'm dressed like that, because it's Homecoming Week. This is Jaleah.
Hi, thank you. We wanted to invite you for our Powder Puff at 7:00 on Friday, and the parade for you guys to be in it, and that starts at 9:00. We have maps where you guys could be lined up if you guys like to be in the parade, and time you guys should be there, and all that information. And then we, the swim team's having a barbecue after that at 11:00. And then Student Council, the game starts at 1:00, the football game, and then that's all for our week. And we'd like to have you guys all there.
What time's the dance?
Do you want us there on the dance?
Sure. You could chaperone.
Great.
And then I have envelopes for all of you guys.
So there's a breakdown of each event and what time it's at, where it is specifically at the school, in each of your letters. And I believe my emails, and they're also. So if you guys have any questions, you can feel free to reach out. But we really hope to see you at any of the events that you can make it to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your support. Appreciate it.
Ricardo Rocha?
Hello, my name is Ricardo Rocha. I live on 60 East 69th Avenue. So I'm here to talk to you today because I submitted a COR, our Colorado Open Records Act, on the 8th of this month, requesting information, or any information about regarding the body shop at the school district. Unfortunately, we received information that some of the, some of your board members and some of your staff members had vehicles inside of the facility that were not necessarily kept on track of, or that there were no, there was little information to why those vehicles were there, and the contracts or the invoices that were submitted so that the work could be done in some of these vehicles. I didn't prepare a speech today. I came right down from the area campus after class because I wanted to express some concerns. On the COR request, I requested that any and all published information which indicates the Adams City High School's protocol for ethical binding and fee-based contractual relationships in the past five years. And unfortunately, all I received was nine invoices that seemed to be handwritten, handwritten on the same day, with the same Ps, with the same Ds, with the same pen. I'm appalled. I'm kind of embarrassed. Because I wonder if the invoices that you submit here are the same ones that you do business with throughout the whole school. Secondly, I requested that all and any information or printed and published documents which indicate for the public and to the public the services offered by Adams City High School auto body shop, as well as the process for bidding services over the past five years. That's 2011, 2016. Unfortunately, I didn't get those either. I was surprised because you requested an additional eight days, and I got a total of 15 documents, or 30 documents, mostly composed of 2009 curriculum. I'd be embarrassed if, if I really, really, I was embarrassed, and I was kind of disappointed because I was expecting a lot more, especially given the names and the complexity of each individual invoices. There are speedometer addresses, licenses numbers, part numbers, hours that are missing signatures, dates, and again, money that's accounted, that's supposed to be accounted for, that is, to me, incomplete. I can show this to you, but you all, I'm sure, have already seen it. Additionally, we requested any internal and external contract services rendered to and by the Adams District, Adams City High School, the auto body shop, over the course of the last five years. And again, I didn't get any of that information. Overall, I'm just disappointed. I was expecting a lot more, given the names that are on these invoices. Again, I keep coming up to the dais and talking about ethical responsibility, transparency, and responsibility, but you failed me, once again, as a community member, with invoices that seem to be handwritten. And again, just a few more seconds. I planned, or I want to, take this up to the Secretary of State. I want to talk to the Attorney General's Office, because this is unfair. And there's a lack of transparency with your community in regards to who and how these services are provided. Because really, these services are there and supposed to be provided so that they would benefit our students. And that's not the case. I don't believe that to be the case. Thank you.
Will somebody comment to him on, give him his requests? Do we give him the core things? Or do we request to let him know how the body shops and how any of our VOTEC programs work here in this district? It's open to the public? People can bring in things as long as, so our students can work on it?
Right, but those are, those kind of things, those kind of contracts and services are supposed to be on paper?
Well, I mean, if you're going to work on a car, how could you say, oh, I sanded a quarter panel, or I, students sanded this? It's there for our students to learn how to use it. I don't understand how you expect students to learn how to do this type of work.
I expect them to know and learn how to do this kind of work. However, I expect these invoices to be completely filled, for a process to be followed, for us to follow some type of ethical responsibility in regards to how we provide these services, and who provides these services, and how these students learn about.
I'm going to call point of order now. I think if you need any further dialogue, you probably need to get in touch with Walt Kramer's, so we can legally get you all what you need.
Again, I think that, I'll go ahead and forward this information to Walt. I'll talk to you, Walt, specifically about this stuff. But again, I will bring this up to the Secretary of State, and I will be looking some more guidance from the Colorado Department of Fire Education and Attorney General's Office. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to superintendent's report.
Yes, on the superintendent's report, we've been taking turns and giving my time to different departments. Today, I have asked Dr. Conno to do a presentation on Literacy Squared. So Dr. Conno, I'll let you take over on that part.
Yes. Good evening, estimado superintendente, Dr. Abrego, President Rowland, distinguished members of the board. I'm here to, I'm here today to give you a first-year literacy classrooms update. As you know, Adams 14 has a partnership with Literacy Square and the Wenon Center from CU Boulder for the implementation of literacy programs. Last year, we started our implementation of literacy programs in four elementary schools, eight classrooms, grade levels K-1. This year, all seven elementary schools are implementing, are implementing literacy programs. We have 24 classrooms, and in grade levels pre-K-2. So we invited Dr. Sandra Biviloski, who is a principal investigator, because we are doing research in our schools to make sure that the implementation is effective. And she's going to be giving us the update for how our literacy classrooms are doing on the first year of implementation of Literacy Square. Vista? Is it working? No? You have any questions before the presentation? We're ready? Okay.
Good evening, honorable members of the board and Superintendent Abrego. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Sandra Biviloski, and it's just an honor to be a part of the reintroduction of bilingual education at Adams 14. So very broadly, I'm going to just talk about Literacy Squared as a research project. It's nationally implemented in different states in the US, and it's made up of four components: research, a professional development assessment in two languages, in both Spanish and English, and a holistic biliteracy instruction model, which provides Spanish literacy and literacy-based ELD. As Dr. Conno said, we implemented in four schools last year, in eight classrooms in kindergarten and first grade. And the time allocations for Spanish literacy is two hours daily, and in kindergarten, literacy-based ELD, it has a minimum allotment of 45 minutes, and of one hour in the first-grade classroom. I just want to share some of the outcomes. So what we did is we looked at oral language proficiency. We looked at both listening and speaking skills in both Spanish and English, using the Stanford Spanish and English Language Proficiency Assessment. And what we found in regards to kindergarten students is that in their Spanish and English skills, they're scoring quite comparably in both listening and speaking. So the majority of students are at the intermediate level for listening skills in kindergarten, and for speaking, they're at the basic level. In first grade, it looks a little bit different in that we see a bit more of a spread. The listening skills for first graders are at the proficient level, and in Spanish, they're more, I'm sorry, that got caught off there, they're at the intermediate level. And in speaking, the majority of kids, there's quite a bit more spread, but the majority of kids are at that intermediate level in both Spanish and English speaking skills, which just points to the unique population that we serve here in the district, that they're truly simultaneous. They're bilingual, they're equally proficient in both languages. We also looked at how students performed in their Spanish and English writing skills. And we have our own research-based and research-tested writing rubric that we use that looks at kids' writing content, structural elements, which includes punctuation, and spelling, with an overall maximum score of 21 points. What we see here is a line graph that shows how students in kindergarten performed across the fall, winter, and spring. So you can see that there's, they start out at the same place in English, so at a very low level, they could just draw pictures at the beginning of the year. By the winter, they were scoring comparably in both Spanish and English, with an average score of around seven, and at the end of the year, close to an eight. In first grade, as you know, it was the first year that the students, they had kindergarten and preschool education in just English-only contexts. So their English scores were a bit higher than their Spanish scores at the beginning of the year, but as they progressed throughout the year, they scored comparably in both read, in Spanish and English, excuse me. So their overall score was at a 10. And so you can see what that looks like. This is just representative of what students in kindergarten were writing at the end of the year. So they're, they're showing comparable skills in both their Spanish and English. And in first grade, this is representative of what students were presenting at the end of the year. So they're writing multiple sentences in sequence, using sequential language. So it's, it's pretty impressive what their writing gains were last year. We also looked at their reading outcomes using a parallel measures. This is a formative measure, the EDL-2 and the DRA-2, you may be familiar with them. EDL measures Spanish reading, and the DRA measures English reading. Again, we only collected reading data from kindergarteners in the spring, and they scored at a level one in both languages in the spring. First graders started in Spanish, not even at a level one, so very early literacy development, and ended at a level four. And in Spanish, they started a bit higher, of course, because they had English-only instruction, but ended comparably to their Spanish score at a level four. So they made a full year's growth, the first graders, but they're quite a bit below where they need to be at the end of first grade. What we did, and I think this is really interesting, and I think it speaks powerfully to how students are performing in bilingual contexts, is we looked, we compared students' STAR reading data for students who were in English-only contexts to those kids that were in the Literacy Squared treatment classrooms. And what we did is we disaggregated students, so we compared students who are classified as non-English proficient. That means that they scored at a level one or two on their access test, and looked at students who are classified as limited English proficient, which are at that more intermediate ability in English. And we compared their outcomes. So what you'll see is that the blue line represents students in Literacy Squared, and the red line is students who are in English-only contexts. And what you'll see is kindergarteners, those that were classified as, you know, very early speakers of English, scored equally as well as their English-only counterparts. Those students that are considered limited English proficient, or at the intermediate levels of language proficiency, scored comparably to the kids in the English. So what this demonstrates is that it, these students are learning English literacy and Spanish literacy, and they're, they're scoring comparably to their counterparts who are only getting English instruction. The first graders look a little bit different. The Spanish-speaking, the students who were in the Literacy Squared classrooms, those non-English proficient students started lower, but they grew at about the same rate as their English counterparts, but, but you can see that the gap, like, lessened a little bit. And the students who were limited English proficient started quite below, the Literacy Squared students started quite below their counterparts in the English-only classrooms, but they outperformed their counterparts in the English-only context. And I think that just really, again, speaks very powerfully to biliteracy instruction. So not only can the kids in a bilingual context score the same as those who are in English-only one, but they're also acquiring Spanish literacy skills at the same time. So in conclusion, I moved very quickly through the data, but I did send a technical report to you, Dr. Abrego, and I'm happy to share it with the other members of the board if you're interested. All of the students who participated in the Literacy Squared project made positive gains in their reading and their writing development. They score comparably, so they're, they're really bilingual. How they perform in English is quite on par with how they're performing in Spanish. We need to work more on their biliterate reading development, and that's something that we're going to be working on in the professional development that we deliver this year to teachers. And then finally, the Literacy Squared students, using STAR data, scored comparably to those students who are in English-only contexts, but they have the added benefit of being biliterate. So they're learning to read and write in Spanish as well. So I appreciate your time, and we look forward to our continued collaboration in this academic year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any questions?
No. I just want to make one comment, Dr. Conno, and I just need to know if I'm saying the correct thing. On your presentation, am I correct in saying that we're taking advantage of our students' native language to enhance their English reading and writing skills?
Yes. Yeah, that's accurate, yes.
And that in turn will help them pass their Colorado academic standards?
Yeah, in that trajectory, yes. Since we have the opportunity to take the assessment in Spanish in third and fourth grade, so they can really demonstrate their, what they can do in terms of literacy development.
Good. Thank you very much. And for our board members, we have about 4,000 students that speak Spanish, so it's very important that we help them also in their native language. Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Numerous policy items were discussed during the business portion of the meeting. The public can always see meeting agendas and meeting minutes by navigating to addams14.org. Click on About Us and select Board of Education.
Okay, moving on, I guess we have no student board. Moving on to routine items. Superintendent's recommendation, personal action, attachment of record. You see that? 1.1, moving on. Okay, I need a motion to accept personnel items.
So moved.
Is there a second?
It's a grant.
Which one? You got 1.0, 2.1, 2.0.
2.1.
Page 5. Yeah, but for the first ones, for the 1.0, 1.1.
2.1. This one here.
Yeah, 2.1.
The grant. Goes in with it.
2.0, 2.1, Superintendent's recommendation, approval to accept terror intervention grant, sustaining funds grants for Lester Arnold High School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call?
Mr. Exermita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kimpfanna?
Aye.
Mr. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to business.
Board President, before we move on, can I just make a little statement on the people that we just approved? The people, am I correct at this time? Yes. I have some people that I invited to be here today because we've just approved their hiring to Adams 14, and at this time, I'd like to introduce them to the board and to our community.
1.0. Still got to vote on 1.0, 1.1.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did vote on it.
Go ahead. Just go ahead.
We went through on all of them? Okay. At this time, I would like Dr. Patterson to please stand up. And Dr. Patterson is going to be new to Adams 14, and Dr. Patterson will take the position of Director of Human Resources. So we'd like to say thank you, Dr. Patterson, to our district. We also have another individual that we're happy to present. Her name is Cynthia Trinidad-Chihan, and she will be, join our Adams team, and she's going to be the manager of teacher effectiveness. And I have one more that I didn't get a chance to introduce because she's been with us for a while, but she is our new Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. So Ms. Alacelley Burgos, if you would please stand? Thank you. So I just wanted to introduce the new hirees. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to business. Resolution, Superintendent's recommendation, need a motion for resolution number 16-013, resolution to declare vacancy. Mr. Kramer?
Yes, so members of the board and members of the public, this will incorporate some edits to the version that's been given to the public, and I will read the entirety into the record. So resolution to declare a vacancy, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Adams 14 accepted the resignation of Robert Vaschall from the Board of Education effective September 13, 2016. And be it further resolved that in accordance with state law, the board declares a vacancy in the school director office that shall be filled by appointment by the board within 60 days in accordance with the following procedure. Interested persons are invited to send a letter to the board with a statement of interest and qualifications by October 11, 2016 at 5:00 PM. Documentation may be submitted in hard copy form or online via the Adams 14 website. Is recommended that the letter of interest include educational background, knowledge of how a school district operates, knowledge of board duties, reason for interest in the board position, contribution to the board, community involvement, Adams 14 involvement, a minimum of two letters of support and a maximum of five, one from a business leader and one from a civic leader. The board will interview prospective candidates on October 18, 2016, at a special Board of Education meeting to commence at 6:00 PM. An additional special meeting dates may be scheduled if the Board of Education, in its discretion, determines those to be necessary. To be eligible for appointment, a candidate must be a registered elector of the school district for 12 consecutive months at a residence within Adams 14 boundaries. The appointee will serve until the next regular school biennial election in November 2017. The appointee will serve until the next regular school biennial election in November 2017. Applicants may deliver the required materials to Addams 14 Educational Support Services at Tension Monica Avina, 5291 East 60th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, 80022, or online. With questions, please contact Monica Avina, Assistant Secretary of the Board of Education at 303-853-3205, or neavina@addams14.org. Adopted and approved this 27th day of September 2016.
Okay, I guess, need a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Ratchelita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to others, Superintendent's recommendation, I need approval to renew contract with the American Logistics Company for accidental transportation services.
So moved.
Second.
Do I hear discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Ratchelita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 2.2, Superintendent's recommendation, approval to contract with the Shallow House to provide educational and therapeutic interventions for students with significant emotional disabilities.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Ratchelita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 2.3, Superintendent's recommendation, I need approval for Adams City High School to contract with the Inspire.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Ratchelita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.4, Superintendent's recommendation, approval to contract with the Rockmont School for the Deaf Charter School to provide educational services for students who are deaf or hard of hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Question. Okay. Westminster High School is also doing that, correct? Isn't that what we voted on last board meeting? Yeah. Okay. So this will be in addition to that?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Ratchelita?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana? Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 2.5, Superintendent's recommendation, needed approval to contract with Little Giants Preschool to provide preschool programming for students in Addams 14 School District.
So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Yes. This is a question for you, Dr. Abrego. According to policy, DFC, preschool council, are we going to have that part of this preschool program? Or is superintendent designing, whoever you design, two parents, children in preschool? Monica, can you pull up that policy, please?
I'm not quite sure. What was your question? You want to know?
Since we talking about preschool?
Yes.
Is the board policy with preschool council?
Right.
Are they going to work together with this program we are about to vote on, Little Giants Preschool? There's a policy saying preschool council, just like DAG, just like BAC, according to board policy as you state, are we going to do the same thing with the preschool? Because if I'm really correct, you are to sign on the superintendent, two parents, children in the preschool program appointed by the superintendent, two members of business community appointed by the superintendent representing the following, TriCare, TriCounty Health Department, Adams County Department of Human Services, Adams County Workforce and Business Center, publicly funded, charter. Question is, are we going to work with the Little Giants preschool, with our preschool, with this policy?
You know, a little bit about Little Giants, we've done business with them for a good 15, 20 years already, so I'm sure TriCounty and all them are already involved. So what you want is to know if there's a council?
We have a council in our district for our students, our preschoolers, just like last.
Oops, okay.
Two weeks ago, Mr. President Rolla brought up that we have one enough for our preschoolers. We've got two buildings over there at the old high school, it's not being utilized, so I'm asking this board, can we take a tour to see what we can do to help our preschoolers? Because we lost four to six hundred preschoolers within the last year, and we have two buildings sitting there not utilized, so we as a district needs to do something with those buildings to better, they're sitting there and not being utilized. So are we as a district, board policy as you states, Dr. Abrego, are going to implement that policy preschool?
Okay, it says the superintendent shall appoint an advisory council that provides assistance and makes recommendations of implementing and coordinating preschool program, putting it to the Colorado Preschool Program Act. We do have that, that is the Colorado Preschool Act that gives us money to support our programs. We accepted those monies, we do have those preschool programs.
We have that council.
We have everything in place. Today I met with our Special Education Director, I made a tour of our two preschools to make sure that everything was in compliance, he has everything there, and we're even planning to expand the program if needed.
Can we as a board take a tour to look at those two buildings?
Sure, any board member, you're always welcome to tour any of our schools and these programs, you're more than welcome. I think we went through them today, and they're very inviting, and they will show you everything that they're doing with the kids.
Okay, Sandy?
Mr. Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were asking to tour what's known as the old cafeteria at the high school and the old theater at where the old high school was. We can do that, we can arrange that, but you need to know that there's no electricity, water, or anything to those buildings, so we would need to make sure it's during daylight and temperature appropriate, or clothing appropriate. So the board at one time gutted them, and they're just a shell, so there is no infrastructure internally. And the old cafeteria is currently used as a storage facility for surplus furniture that comes in and out from school to school. But I'm happy to help facilitate that if the board wishes.
Couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, as I passed by that old school, I see that you were cleaning it out. Were you getting rid of the old stuff, bringing in new stuff, or?
Over the course of seven, eight years since we moved into the new high school, it's become the home of wayward stuff that's broken, no longer usable in the district. And so it's been many, many, many years of stuff just stacking in there, and at times it's become very unorganized. And so the maintenance crew and the grounds crew worked to clean that up and get it more organized, get rid of stuff that's broken, and move things out. I don't believe there's anything brand new in there, because again, if it rains outside, it rains inside on occasion, and many times we have break-ins quite regularly to that building of people looking just for places to stay. So there's, the stuff that's in there is pretty well-used, so.
My question is, you said no water, no electricity. I understand why we have no water, because they had to bring the water taps from over there to over here to open up this building. Well, how come there's, do we still have taps for the electrical boxes if we need electricity, or do we have to have a whole new system set up?
That's a great question. When they demolitioned the old high school, and it's prior to my arrival here, they gutted those buildings as part of that demolition, and so obviously, yes, the water tap went to, I think, the new high school, and so that's why there's no water to water the fields that are there, and the electricity was removed as well. So it's just a shell, which means it's the roof and the outside walls are all that exist. I believe the old theater chairs, those were gone as well, and those aren't in the theater either, and I don't know the history prior to my arrival, it was already done.
I have a quick question. If the lights is off and there's no service, how's the employees taking things in the building? Ain't that a safety concern?
During certain times of the year, the answer to that is yes. Felix Barone is our grounds manager, he usually goes in there, and he goes in with safety lights and hard hats and hard shoes, and a lot of times he's going in first before other people come in with him. It's lighted inside through battery-operated lights, but there are no lights to turn on.
Thank you.
I guess, I don't know if we, do we want to continue to look into that for preschool?
I would like to do that. I think we should do something with those buildings. We can ask DAG, BAC, preschool, the community, what can we do with those buildings that's just been sitting there collecting? I mean, we need to ask the community, we need to do something with these buildings.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Thomas, because it's been sitting there, but I remember when they first left those buildings, they were supposed to be classrooms for teachers, where they were supposed to go for PD or whatever things, but I think we, last year I thought, maybe somebody can correct me, I thought we had 600 and some preschoolers that we did not let into our district. And if we're not going to let them into our district, that's a good chance. I know we just got a paper here that we're losing close to 4,000 kids in our district, and if I could get my child, or my daughter, or son into another neighboring school, I'd probably go there, and they would probably stay there the rest of their school year, and we can't afford to be losing students. If they keep saying that we're losing students, we're losing students, well, we've got to find ways to keep our students.
And, Mr. Roll, I just want to correct one thing, that we said it more than once, that we're turning down students, or the 600 students. We have a capacity of 600 students, so we want as many to come as possible. We never turn anyone down. As a matter of fact, we continue to recruit, as long as parents come in and fill out the application, and if they meet the criteria, they're more than welcome, and we will.
That's the issue, though, meet the criteria. We don't want to accept these kids because they are residents of the district, not to meet a certain criteria. I think language is one, and speech is another, and.
Social skills.
But I want anybody that applies, I want to get them in, and if we have the facilities.
But there is certain criteria that has to be met, because this is not being paid by us. This is money that's being provided to Addams District by the Colorado Department, so they set the criteria, and if we follow it, we get that money for free. If you wanted to do it a different manner, then, you know, we won't qualify.
Here's my question. When they opened this school, the new one, and we closed down the buildings, Dave, I think you were on the board, the board appropriated $3 million or $3.5 million to renovate that The board approved it, nothing came of it, where's the money?
Well, I think it's still in reserves, because we can't, it's not, well, we weren't supposed to spend it unless it was on capital.
Right.
I don't know what happened there.
The board did, I wasn't on the board, but I remember they did appropriate, approve for $3.5 million to fix that building up, so it could be used for PD or preschools or whatever was decided.
I wasn't aware of that, but I mean, we are, when we did, I think Ms. Burgos and I both met with the preschool director and the Special Education Director, and they were talking about expanding, but I don't know what you have, plans you had in the past, but we are definitely looking at plans in the future to expand our program, because right now I know we're going to open up one classroom, and if needed, how can we help more students? We were trying to figure that out.
I think that's great, but since the previous board had already approved $3.5 million to fix that building up for either PD or classrooms, do we still have that money there available? So we could, if decided preschools, we could make those classrooms and bring in more kids, I don't know.
I don't know about that money. I mean, I could talk to the financial person tomorrow to answer your question, but I don't have that information right now.
It's not there.
It's not there.
I'd have to research the history, it was not before I came to this district. It's my understanding, and I'd have to go confirm it, is that the demolition of the old high school was more money than what the architectural designs were to make it a professional development building. And so there isn't any money, and then what was left was put into the transportation center to improve the transportation bus pad where the buses are. That's what I know. I would have to go through minutes of the board and find out exactly what the transactions were, but there's no budget that's there to build anything or renovate anything, which is why nothing's been done, to my knowledge.
I know that was under Pat Sanchez's reign.
And I think it was even before that.
We could ask Larry.
Larry.
Because he was part of the board then.
Mrs. Kintana is correct. The board did appropriate $3.5 million to renovate the cafeteria portion of the old high school for a professional development center. That money was later reallocated to, the $3.5 million was reallocated to work specifically to improve the academics at the high school and at our middle school. We hired a number of individuals, and you might recall the ones that were hired for the middle schools, the math coaches, which indeed brought up our scores into a place where it got us out of the red in that situation. All that money had been, has been reallocated, and I believe that took place in 2013. I'm not sure, I have my minutes at home, I have that whole history, but the money was spent in accordance with the direction of the Board of Education that's set at that time. So that's, the other thing is, and I may be wrong on this, but I'm pretty sure, we do have the, I don't know the term, the URLs for water for the, or at least we should have, because we needed that water on that property in order to water the fields to keep in accordance with the mandates of the city. So that money, those taps, they're not called taps, there's another term for them, they are there, and they can be used if we need to. I hope that answers your question, or clarifies it. Thank you.
And just like, we'd like to look at, especially the little theater, every time I go to a performance at the elementaries, there's no room for the parents to come in. I mean, we have a theater sitting over there, which could accommodate, if the elementaries, I sometimes ask the principals, why don't you ask for the high school? Well, because it's booked already, and that's fine. But if we have something, let's put it to use, let's look into trying to get it done. We keep saying, let's do things for our students. I'm sorry, I don't think we're doing enough for our students, because it's all based on how much we can do. Well, let's take a look and see what it's going to cost us to do. Maybe it's not going to cost as much as we think. And one of the things I have mentioned, as a gentleman came here, was questioning our Vote Tech program, is why can't we have our students that are in the wood program? I mean, there's like 15 homes that were built in this community by our students. And so this is where we can use our students to learn the experience of learning how to build. And my understanding was, that's why we lost that new person that we just hired last year as the wood person, because he says, I'm here to teach these kids how to build, and they're not letting me. So let's let them learn. We need, I mean, jeez, all you have to do is go across the street, and you see homes going up all over the place. In three or four years, we're going to be in trouble when the dog track starts building, when you have another majority of homes going up right there on 64th and Kearney, or Holly, or Kearney, and then you have another set going up. The construction world's out there. construction world's out there. On the average, we have 1,200 people moving into Colorado a month. Over 100,000 people are coming. Where are we gonna get the homes for these people? We can have, or we can start teaching our students how to get ahead of the other schools. But I, if we have a consensus to look at how much it costs us, yes, no?
Yes.
And take a tour, too.
Harvest it, honey. So we have a consensus, a consensus, Eric. Uh, Sandy, can you take a look and see what it would run, and what we would have to do to-
But also, I'd like for us to take a tour.
See what, how we can spend our money, because I think we have to start using it. Otherwise, we'll lose it. Uh, any other questions? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Moving on to 2.6, superintendent's recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Head Start of Adams County to provide pre-school programming for students in Adams 14 School District.
So moved.
Is there a discussion? No discussion? Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 2.7, superintendent's recommendation. I need approval for second-year approval to purchase services from Literacy Squared for elementary school teachers to meet the needs of our emerging bilingual students.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.8, I need approval, uh, of contracting with Mountain State Employees' Council in an amount not to exceed an additional $15,000. So moved. Hearing no second, I guess it's thrown out the window. Moving on to 2.9, superintendent's recommendation, approval to accept contract with believed to achieve to provide after-school programming at Central Elementary and Rose Hill Elementary.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.10, uh, superintendent's recommendation. I need a appro, uh, motion for the approval of Adams 14 and School District 14 Colorado School Classified Employee Association, CCSEA negotiation approval.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to 2.11, superintendent's recommendation, approval for out-of-state travel to Indianapolis, Indiana for the annual National Career Pathway Network Conference.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who is, who will be representing this?
Uh, that would be Cedric Lindsay.
Pardon me?
Cedric Lindsay.
Oh, okay. All right. Is she going by herself?
It's a Phee.
Or is there-
One person.
Okay. Uh, hearing no other discussion. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to 2.12, superintendent's recommendation. I need approval for in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs for 76 Annual Colorado Association of School Board Conventions.
So moved.
Okay, hearing discussion?
I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation. I, I went to the, to the Casby Conference last year, and since there's not a, since there's not a recommendation that the, the student board is going with, it's only gonna be our folks, I'm gonna recommend that I travel every day to Colorado Springs. I don't want to stay there. It'll save the district some money. Um, so I'll just travel back and forth. It's only for two days, three days at the most.
Okay, just make arrangements with Monica.
Okay.
Okay. And if anybody else feels the same way, you could do that. I may do it, too. So, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas? Aye.
Moving on to 2.13, I need approval for in-state overnight travel to Loveland by Adam City High School Student Council seniors.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have one thing. Um, I noticed in the, um, presentation that, that we're asking for our student council to pay their entry level fee of $50. Do we know how many people are gonna be going to that? Does anybody have a qu, an idea of how many? How many do you think?
Eight, 10, somewhere around there.
I, I'd, I'd like to make a recommendation that we pay their entry fee if we're gonna ask them to go and get educated, uh, away from their homes. I think that the Board of Education should pay their entry fee of $50 each, as long as it's not more than 10 people.
Well, I can look at that, too, and, um, we have a 74 discretionary account that we could also-
Pardon me?
We, we also have a 74 discretionary account that we could also, um, pay for some fees for students.
The reason I say that is because student council takes a lot of time, and it takes a lot of time for them kids. And those kids are taking time away from their, their home life for a couple of days, probably two, three days to go.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I think it's fair to have them, charge them $50 each. I make a recommendation that we pay that.
So there's a motion for us to pay the $50 for the students that are attending, uh, the conference?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, s, any discussion? Hearing none. So we have a motion to amend this. Can, uh, we do that now, Monica, together, or do we have to do it individually?
Well, now you have two motions on.
Right. So, can we have a motion on the first one to allow the students to go to Loveland? Can we have a roll call on that?
You have two motions on.
What'd you say?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye. Okay, moving on, then we need a roll call for the approval of paying the $50 for each students attending this conference. Do I have a motion?
We had a motion, and a second.
Oh, was it together? Okay, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to 2.14, superintendent's recommendation. I need, uh, approval of out-of-state travel to Santa Fe, New Mexico by English Language Development Department.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel, uh, 3.1, superintendent's recommendation. I need approval of a TPA increase of approximately 1.1 FTE at Lester Arnold High School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana?
Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Uh, moving on to communications. It's, uh, it was good that we approved something for some of our students to take a field trip. I don't understand how come many of our students don't, do not take more field trips. Or do they have to be approved by us when they take a field trip to the museum or to the refuge things? Yes, no? Did anybody know?
It's usually part of their plan, some type, it's their plan, whatever the school's doing. If they want to go on a science field trip to the, uh, arsenal, they're more than welcome. They just have to go through the process.
We have to approve that, or not?
Oh, it's usually done through the schools.
Okay, just want to make, because we don't ever approve anything for our students. So it was good to see this for the student council to finally let them go somewhere. So hopefully, our kids are taking field trips, 'cause the other day I was golfing at City Park, and I seen all kinds of school buses, but I didn't see a District 14 school bus there. Uh, and we have to see more of our people.
Dave, those are just overnight ones you have to approve? Anything during the day?
Well, I didn't know.
In the, in the lesson plan?
All right, thank you. Okay, so I just hope that, uh, we'll all be ready for the parade, and, uh, there, I don't know what the plans are. We haven't gotten, uh, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna be in cars, or if we're going to be the unicycle, or whatever, that we're going to be driving, and are we going to, uh, Monica, are we gonna get candy to pass out to the kids? I shouldn't even say the kids. I should say the community, 'cause a lot of parents want candy, too.
So, uh, President Roll, the information has been provided to the board in Friday updates for several weeks now. Um, each board member is to provide their own vehicle. Um, you'll line up in the parade like everyone else. Um, you have a section that is assigned for elected officials, um, and you will have candy, um, for the parade.
Okay. So I hope to, like I said, everybody there, and hopefully we'll see at the football game. Is there a section? I don't know, I haven't read that. Did they, uh, put a section for the staff and board and administrators to sit in up in the stands, or we're all on our own?
There is one now created.
[laughing]
Yes, we'll have your section.
So, and who are we playing?
Montbello High School.
Easy win.
Okay, uh-
Good. And I, I'm thinking that, uh, there's also, is there, am I correct, there's a barbecue, and then, uh, we did win our last football game, so we're on a roll.
Yeah, they're having-
Part of the festivities, correct? Yes.
Heavy love, I presume.
Yeah.
So, Timmy, so I've been visiting a few of the schools, and I'd like to just let some of the educators that are here, principals, whoever here is here, uh, the students are excited to be back in school. Um, they're excited to hear they have a new superintendent. These are just the kids I've been talking to. Uh, I've been to a couple of sporting events already. I went to the basket, girls' basketball game last night. I don't know how the volleyball team ended up doing. Did they win last night? Do you know?
Uh, I saw the junior varsity. I didn't see the senior varsity.
Yeah, and I stopped in, and I met a little bit with the wrestling, uh, wrestling program. They weren't having practices or anything, but some of the other people were there. But I do want to make a statement to everybody here, you know. Some people recognize the good things that are happening at the Board of Education and in the state, in the, in the district here itself. Uh, I was talking with the, with the person who brought his student from Mapleton School District, uh, was a state qualifier last year as a junior, came into our school, uh, because he wants to graduate from Adam City High School. So that's a, that's a good thing for, for us to hear, you know. And I just met him at an event I was at at Sunday. And just so everybody knows, the Batus event, uh, was Sunday. It's a scholarship fundraiser for the kids here in Adams 14. Uh, I went, I attended it. I think it was done very nicely. Um, those young folks put on a, a great show. They had some people here from CSU who, who sincerely support Adams 14. I can say that, sincerely support Adams 14, because they're from Adams 14, and they came back and they donated their time. They came in, they handed out burritos, they did everything that needed to happen. And the event, I believe, went very, very well. So I don't know how much money they made or anything, but hopefully, that all goes to our kids. So, uh, that's another good thing. So, uh, that's what I've been doing.
I just want to kind of ditto what you said, Timmy. I heard also, um, this weekend also about Dr. J. Uh, it was very good. They, uh, had heard and, uh, that how he's going into the schools from the first day, and talking to the staff, and talking to the children, and they, it was all positive. So.
Thank you.
My communication is different. Um, we, um, this board approved, um, 200,000 for summer jobs for 17 students only, uh, worked. But as of today, we have not got a balance back from that 200,000 K that this board approved for the summer jobs, and those kids worked July the 1st to, I believe, July the 30th. And I believe, if you count today's, that's approximately about 45 days from today. Um, we have not got a balance, an income statement, or anything that let us know what is the balance of that money that was spent for those summer jobs for those students. Because this board would like to allocate some more money for different projects for students within this district. So, Dr. Abrego, can you look into that for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Abrego, anything?
No, just that it's gonna be a very special weekend. It's homecoming, so again, we hope everybody comes out and enjoys the festivities, and we will have all our board members and superintendent and other, our personnel will be there also.
Okay. Um, at this time, I, I'd like to, all of you, to welcome Ms. McIntosh, who was sitting up here in the front for, I don't know, 40 years, I think. So if you could stand up, so they can see who you are, and it's good to have a couple, because we also have, but he's here all the time, Deidre Mosterna, who was also part of the board for eight years, 10 years, somewhere along the line in there. So it's good to, uh-
Good morning.
Oh, and Larry, do I forget about Larry? He's just a rookie. So, anyway, it's glad to have him here so they can critique us and let us know what we're doing right, and what we're doing wrong, and what we should be doing. Uh, other than that, is there any other discussion for the good of the cause?
I just want to know, have we heard anything back on the audit we had done?
Uh, we've given them a timeline, and I believe that they're supposed to be giving us a report by the end of this week. Am I correct?
We're hoping to have a final report.
They've been in communication.
Cause I know we had a committee, so I thought they were supposed to bring that back to the committee.
Oh, wait, wait.
You know?
I'm just hoping to get something from them. If I get something from them, I'll turn it over to the board and do what you need to do with that.
Okay.
Okay, any other? Okay, uh, we don't have a need for another executive session, do we? Okay, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Well, we get to go home before 8 o'clock. So, can we have roll call, Monica?
Mr. Achuleta?
Aye.
Mrs. Kintana? Aye.
Mr. Roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 7:51.
These are just some of the highlights of the Board of Education meeting. The board meets at 6:30 PM on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, and we hope to see you at a future meeting.